Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, April 16th Board of Selectmen meeting. Seven PM, citizens input. Seven oh five, new small wireless right-of-way policy discussion. Seven twenty, amendment to regional dispatch intermunicipal agreement. Seven thirty, FY-20 budget discussion update with advisory committee. Eight o'clock, Board of Selectmen sign annual town meeting warrant. Eight ten, Foxborough Housing Authority. Eight twenty, Selectmen's update. Eight twenty-five, Town Manager's update. And then we have a few action items. Doc, do you want to lead us in the pledge?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And seven o'clock, anybody here for citizens input?
Good evening. Pat Stevens, sixty-three Mechanic Street. I was wondering if you had any time to look over the information I gave you about the speed limits in town? I have not heard from the police at all. I did file a report to get an accident report for the past year in front of my house. Between my house and the YMCA, there's been five accidents. I can't get the information because it's... Scott Austin said it was private, people's information on it, so... And I wasn't involved in the accidents, so...
Have you... I've actually communicated your information to the police department. I think the chief is on his way in right now, actually. He can probably speak to that better than I can. But I know your information was communicated to them directly. Both your phone numbers.
Okay.
Let's kind of get on that first thing.
Yeah. Just, Chief, this is an item that just came up. Ms. Stevens is actually, was wondering... She has not been communicated with by the police department. She was wondering if you had any update on that situation.
I'm sorry, what issue? Who is it?
This was the situation that she's had on speeding relative to the area on Mechanic Street.
The last I knew, Officer Buckley had made several attempts to stop by your house, left messages on the phone numbers that we had for you.
Nope.
Well, I know that's true. Whether you've connected or received them, I don't know. But why don't we chat? And I'll reconfirm again the phone numbers and email addresses and the address and everything we had, because Officer Buckley was very clear that he'd made several attempts. I apologize if you've not connected, but let's try and make sure that happens.
Okay. And everybody got the files that I put together? Because I know you weren't all here last two weeks ago.
Yeah, I got them when I came back.
Thank you.
Anybody else for citizens input?
Joni Kitani, seven Willis Lane. Sunday morning, about ten-thirty, coming down Beach to Mechanic with my ninety-six-year-old mother-in-law in the car, my wife in the backseat, buckled in, both, all of us buckled in, hit a pothole that absolutely almost gave my mother-in-law a heart attack. I mean, a quiet, easy-going woman, silent all the time. I thought I was going to have to rush her to Norwood. Beach Street is a mess, a mess. It's a cut-through. It's a main street cut-through in Foxborough, just like the street I grew up in Dedham, Sprague Street. A cut-through from Dedham one-twenty-eight to Hy-Park. I've got experience in this. Nonetheless, throw in the speeding also. Coming out, I live on Willis Lane. Coming out of Willis Lane, they're coming around the corner, coming from Mechanic, around that corner, sixty-five miles an hour. I just proceed, and then they look at me like I'm at fault because they're right on top of me. And same with my wife and other neighbors on my street. Something has to be done about Beach Street. There's only one forty mile an hour sign on that street with four crosswalk signs, which I see nobody use. What are we gonna, what are we gonna do? Wait for a catastrophe? I got two grandsons, there's other grandkids on the street. Beach Street, I have a neighbor on Beach Street. He couldn't make it tonight, but he'll be here because he's had it. The speeding is out of control. What are we, what are we gonna wait for? A family to get wiped out? I never see any kind of speed traps on Beach Street, nothing. Game day, forget it. I know the police officers check at Beach and Mechanic, but I still see a lot of cars come through. And if you live on Willis Lane or any of those side streets, Metal View or anybody else, I'm telling you, the traffic is crazy. But I'm more concerned about Beach Street itself, the way it is now. When they did my street on Willis Lane, it seemed to take forever for a six, a six, seven-house lane. I got two telephone poles still sitting in front of my house, four years later, just sitting there. National Grid said they'd be there in two weeks, three years ago, because the excavator almost tipped over, and he put his boom out to catch himself, and he hit the tree, took a chunk, excuse me, hit the telephone pole with the boom, and took a chunk out of the telephone pole. And I told Mr. Gallagher about it. And my mother-in-law's on oxygen. And if we lose juice, she got no air. And they gave me the runaround. But me and Mr. Gallagher ironed it out. But the poles are still there. The pole's still damaged. Every winter, I'm crossing my fingers, if that pole's gonna come down in the middle of the Northeast and she's got no oxygen, I had to go and buy a generator just to back it up. Now, I'm really concerned about Beach Street and the speed. And I got two grandsons, and if they get wiped out, I'm gonna be very upset, very upset. I don't gripe, I'm not a griper. I don't complain, but I'm complaining now. And there's about a hundred people behind me. Now, I can organize them, and they'll all come in here next two Tuesdays from now. But I'm telling you, I'm not gonna wait for a catastrophe. And then what are we gonna say? Oh, jeez. I mean, does anybody, does anybody here use Beach Street? Do you live around Beach, around Beach Street? Do you need an access? Jim?
I do, I do.
Jim knows. They just dug up a trench today, and they just, they didn't back, they backfill it, but it's still, it's not, it's not even. Like I say, Selectmen, I, and Bill, I don't complain. I'm an easygoing guy, I really am. But I'm not gonna wait for a catastrophe, or a tragedy, I should say. So, I know Onyx, you know, I never, I don't know Onyx. I know a lot of contractors. I got buddies in the business. I never heard of Onyx. But, I mean, can they move any faster? So, we get that street paved, and I would like... I see other towns with blinking, like in Mansfield, coming down Elm, the blinking speeding light. Speed limit's forty, you're going over forty, you're doing forty-one. It blinks and lets you know. There's no electronic. There's one speed limit sign on Beach, coming from Mechanic, full of mildew. Two years, three years ago, I went over and I just, I cleaned it so people could see the forty mile an hour zone. You can't see because there's branches in front of it and everything else. I'm not criticizing anybody. I'm not. But now that I got grandkids, I'm not taking no more chances. And I mean it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jon. Can we get an update from Roger, like, when Beach Street will be done?
Roger can speak to that. That's planned to be done this year.
Yeah, Roger, come on up and just...
Excuse me, Mr. Hill, can I say one thing, please?
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt.
Johnny, you're gonna have to come up and...
I'm sorry.
Mr. Hill was very helpful when they were doing Willis Lane. And even before they did Willis Lane, we have a group, we had a group home at the end of our street. There was three shifts. Willis Lane, I thought, from a commissioner I knew in Dedham, he told me fifteen miles an hour on a lane. Mr. Hill said it was thirty. If you ever go down Willis Lane, do thirty and try to back out of a driveway where somebody comes, maybe forty to fifty. I've seen him come around the corner off a, off a beach, coming down my street without even hitting the brakes, doing sixty. And I'm not labeling anybody, I don't know who they are. Maybe they don't understand the neighborhood situation as far as speed, speed control. But Mr. Hill sent me out a pamphlet. And he explained the Massachusetts traffic speed control law. And I kind of disagreed with him when I read it. He said it was thirty. I think it should be fifteen. And I asked him for a postage. And Officer Hoffman, he was a traffic detail policeman at the time, came down and put a meter on the pole. And he, and he kept control of the speed on the street, and he would check it. And there was a few that went over the speed limit. But they're not there to eyeball it and see it. When I'm working in my yacht and I see them coming down forty, fifty, six, especially coming up the hill, they get momentum down at the end of the Matt Crush Farm. And up they go. The group home is no longer there. And I can't, there's no, there's no more situation like that. But Mr. Hill was nice enough to send out me that pamphlet and explain that. But I thought thirty miles an hour, and I think I did call you back, Mr. Hill, tell you thirty miles is much too fast. It should be fifteen, maybe even slower because it's a very narrow street loaded with oak trees on either side.
Okay.
I might tell you that after we went through that, I think it was last year or the year before, the state gives the town the option to go down to twenty-five now. So, you've still gotta meet the criteria, which means the houses have to be two-hundred feet or less apart on the street. And then it becomes thickly settled, and then you can, then the Selectmen as road commissioners can vote to go to twenty-five. Same thing on Beach Street. Anywhere the houses are closer than two-hundred feet apart, they can go all the way down to twenty-five now. But it takes a vote of the Selectmen as commissioners. As far as the reconstruction goes, Onyx has got all the services on the north side done. They're working on the south side now. There's a lot more services on the south side, and they're longer. So, it's taken them a little more time. But we've used them, this is the third job they've done for us, and these guys are good.
I can tell by the equipment, excuse me, Mr. Hill, but I can tell by the equipment and what they progress in a day. But I think that project should have been started a year ago, a year ago this month. They started that much too late, and they got in the winter. So, they had to hold off in the winter. But, you know, and then the ploughs had to deal with, you know, I saw the ploughs, they had to take their time so they didn't wipe nothing out, you know, the hydrants, new hydrants there and everything else.
It really was a two-year project, though.
For me, for me, at the end?
Yeah, because the road is ten thousand feet long. And we had to re-line the main first, which means we had to shut off the main. And in order to shut off the main, we had to put temporary main in some places, like from Ira Vaughn all the way up to Mechanic Street.
Right.
The rest of the street, we had, we had two other mains out there to feed the houses temporarily, but...
Right. But do we have an estimated completion date?
I think they're almost done with the, with the pipe work. Maybe, maybe another month on the pipe work.
Good evening.
So, the construction of the water main work, we should see completion, you know, by the end of the spring. So, Memorial Day is their target to complete that work. We're targeting doing the resurfacing in the fall. So, we're gonna give all those trenches the summer to settle out. We'll continue to address them as, as need be if they settle. You know, patch them as needed. And then, in the fall, we're gonna do a cold-in-place recycling process on that street. So, we're gonna take all the asphalt. We're gonna grind it up, relay it down right in place, give it about two weeks to settle. And then we're gonna do an inch and a half of superpave asphalt mix on top of that. And then that'll be the final paving job on that street.
All right, Chris?
Yes.
Yep.
And we met.
Yep.
We met, buddy.
Can you just make sure that we go out there and check the trenches and check potholes and stuff like that?
I gotta give Mr. Hill and Chris credit. I mean, they have been spot-patching Beach Street.
Yeah.
But it's like, you know what, in the ocean.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? But that pothole I hit Sunday morning, I thought I was gonna lose my mother-in-law to a heart attack.
What was the location, so I can get that?
It was probably five feet before Mechanic.
Okay.
Right by Arthur Brown Corner.
Right up at the corner.
Right there.
I think part of the problem there, Johnny, was the fact you had a lot of rain. And the rain washed out a lot of that stuff out. And we had, we had issues all over.
Agreeable, Bill, but I think on a street like that, you know, I'm not the only one complaining about, you know, talking about this. There's a lot of people that aren't happy, and Jim's probably one of them. But, you know, you should send the patch truck out every rainstorm and check that street, at least us.
We usually send two patch trucks.
Right, Jim. I mean, excuse me, Roger. You're right, you're right. But I'd like to see, like Chris says, when this is all said and done, probably, what? September, maybe? When it starts to cool down, we'll finish it, you know, when the finisher go down. But let's get some, let's get some good signage on that road and tree trimming so people can see it. These people that come from out of state and everything else, Connecticut, New York and everything, go to games, concerts or whatever, they're flying down Beach. I know they get a spot check there. Sometimes I see Connecticut and New York and Rhode Island plates come down Beach during the game.
It would help if you, you had your neighbors sign, sign some sort of a petition to have the speed limit set at twenty-five because that's... I, I know from experience of lowering speed limits that when you do speed trap after you lower the speed limits, eighty percent of the violators are locals. So, you have to...
Roger, I agree with you on that.
They have to sign up.
Honestly, you're right. I've seen that happen. You're right, you're right. But it spreads out, too.
I think the chief could tell you the same thing, too.
All right, so let's try to get together on this in the next few days and kind of work on what we can do.
We'll try and address it tomorrow. We'll try and get to it tomorrow.
All right. Roger, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Chris.
Could I just make a suggestion?
Yep.
You're overlaying every, the trenches every Friday.
Jeff, Jeff, can you come up?
Isn't that the way it's happening now? The trenching is done during the week, it's overlaid every Friday?
Yeah, that's typically what they've been doing.
So, what I would just recommend is, before they're out there with hot nicks, just identify, there's some big stretches all the way from Mechanic to Edwards and particularly from Mechanic to Ira Vaughn. You know, if they're there anyway with a truck, can we get some of those potholes done?
We can work on that.
Don't have to have a special trip or anything like that.
All right. One more question. What should I do about these telephone poles? And is National Grid's giving me the runaround?
Yeah, I want...
I mean, I'm not gonna wait for that pole. I mean, every winter, I'm crossing my fingers. I didn't witness the boom hitting it, but it took a, it took a probably sixty, eight-foot chunk out of that pole.
We'll see what we can do with help on that.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you, thanks, Jon.
Anybody else for citizens input? Seeing none. Seven oh five, new small wireless right-of-way policy. Bill, you wanna bring us up to speed on this?
Sure. So, I actually am grateful to Selectmen Development who pointed this out to me that this was something that actually was below the radar for a lot of communities. And it was an FCC ruling that came out recently this past year which allowed communities to set regulations about this and caught a little bit of number of communities off guard. But, but what has happened is that a couple of communities have developed regulations, and now we're actually, a lot of us are following those same regulations. So, the town of Burlington has come up with a, with a pretty good regulation that you have before you tonight that we've hijacked effectively by, by taking their, their language and adopting it to the town of Foxborough. What this is, is that the, 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 the reasons this came about is that the technology has changed. And now you've heard a lot about 5G as being the new, latest technology that's coming out. And what's happening is that you're no longer seeing the big cell towers. What you're seeing is these towers that'll pop up on top of the telephone poles. And that's what's, you see these white little tubular poles that are popping up on top of telephone poles all over town. What's happened is that if you don't have any kind of a regulation, they can just be put up in any, any way, shape, or form. And sometimes in the cheapest way, that actually helps the company, but not necessarily the community. So, what we've now come up is a standard in some regulations that allow us to, to, first of all, collect the permit for them doing that because it is within the right-of-way. Those, those poles, those tubular structures are located on top of telephone poles, which are located within the town's right-of-way. So, therefore, the town has the ability to regulate on that basis. So, the, what's before you tonight is a draft regulation. I think it's actually a pretty good one. I've actually had it reviewed by several people on staff, including our IT director, who indicated that, he thought it was great, it was really well-done, as well as our town planner, thought it was really well-done. The, a couple of suggestions were, though, that, one thing that it doesn't mention in the regulation was that, is that we, one suggestion was to try and include something for historic areas. So, that if, if in fact there was a, one of these things being located in a historic sensitive, historic sensitive area, we certainly would want to take a further look at that to see how it can be developed in such a way so it doesn't impact the, impact the area negatively. So, so I think that's one, one possible change. And also, they also provide us with sort of design guidelines, which, which was suggested by the town of Vandover, which I think are really good, actually. And, but I think there's no tie-in from the, from the, from the design guideline into the application. So, we want to, we want to try and tie that in a little bit tighter. So, realizing that this was done, put together in literally about, about four or five days, we've, we've done the best we could to probably get it in front of you. Because what's happened is that the FCC says if you don't have a regulation before the fourteenth, you can't look back. We're looking forward anyways, so we can't look back anyways. But, but we're looking forward from the sixteenth, which is the first opportunity we've had to get it in front of you. So, so the regulation's actually quite good. I think it's, I would encourage the board to adopt it now. We can always amend it later because it is a policy and regulation. So, that way you have some protection built into the town immediately. And I'll defer to Jim, if you have any further thoughts on that.
Does anybody on the board have questions on this? One of the questions, I mean, do we have any of these existing now in town?
There are some in town, there are. They're actually located, they're located in various locations. I think there's, there's a, there's one actually down by the recreation area. There's one, there's a couple on Mechanic Street, if I'm not mistaken. And there's one even on one-forty, a couple on one-forty. And you're gonna start seeing more and more of them because obviously 5G is becoming much more popular.
So, explain the fourteenth date. What was that date to have a policy in place?
So, the FCC came out with a regulation which was below the radar from a lot, a lot of places, to have it in place so that you could have a regulation to protect the community. So, you can't look back. If you didn't have it in by the fourteenth, you couldn't look back.
So, any of the ones that exist?
Yeah, we can't touch those anyways at this point. But we certainly can touch the ones going forward. So, I think we're at a good point to put this in place to further protect the community.
When a company comes in to do this, they don't have to notify anybody? They just go to...
Now, they'll have to actually apply for a permit.
No, I know now, but like, today, if they could just go to any pole they want?
Right, they could go in and do it and, as long as they have permission from the pole owner, which is the, which is either National Grid or Verizon, rather. And so, those are the two pole owners in town.
Okay.
See, what's happening is with the 5G, it's the fifth generation of technology. And the ones that are out there now, you could put something out there. The ones that are out there now could reach four or five blocks. The ones that are coming on the 5G, they have, they have to be line of sight, so it's usually every block.
Right.
So, you're gonna see Verizon and Comcast and all these different companies putting them there every block. So, you're gonna, you're gonna see them on telephone poles, light poles, things like that. And it's, they're already, you know, people are concerned visually, but also with all the, the wireless interference and stuff. So, it's kind of like a Western, right?
Right.
People are gonna jump on it, and then we'll see what happens after. So, this, this gives us an ability to at least have them come in front of us and look to see what it's gonna look like, where it's gonna go, how many of them, without them just doing it.
And have some design standards, at least.
Now, does this policy cover private property at all if it's truly the wild, wild west?
It only, it only protects us because they have to, they're building those, a lot of these right in the right towns right-of-way. So, we have the ability to control it that way. On private property, I don't know that we have that regulation.
They are going on, you'll see them...
In buildings.
Side of the buildings, a lot, a lot of buildings.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, I mean...
Church spires and things of that nature.
And the policy would go in effect right-of-way?
Yes.
I don't think we're typically ones to rush to adopt something that is new.
There's a lot of committees scrambling in the same position.
I think we might want to take your advice and adopt this and then kind of see if we can amend it, if we need to add definitely the historic district. That's a big piece.
Right.
Bill, has Paige looked at this as far as zoning? Is there any protection for private property on zoning, requiring it to come to the planning board?
She has not, she wouldn't deal with it from that perspective. This is strictly dealing with the right-of-way because this is what we can regulate.
I understand the right-of-way, but for a zoning change? Because typically antenna, you know, if you want to put an antenna on a building, you have to go through planning board anyway.
Right. So, that would fall into the building code and also the zoning for that. But, so they, they do have some limitations right now. I did give it to, she looked at it today.
My, my point is, maybe we should talk to Paige. And if we have to amend the zoning to include these on buildings...
Oh, I see, yeah, understood.
Might want to look at, you know, a warrant article to amend the zoning.
In the fall, yeah.
In the fall. Unless it's already included. Unless it's already included, but my sense is... Something to research, certainly.
Right.
Want a motion?
You have anything? Yeah?
All right, let's move to accept the new small wireless slash right-of-way policy. Second.
Motion made seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor? Thanks, Jim, bringing that up.
I think I brought it to the attention, but you guys did all the putting it all together. Appreciate that.
No, no problem. Thank you.
All right. Seven twenty, amendment to regional dispatch intermunicipal agreement.
So, Rob?
Rob, do you want to come up?
So, this is a, is sort of a takeoff from the meeting the other night where unfortunately we only had one member that could make because there was a lot of different conflicts the other night with, with folks to attend the meeting in Mansfield. We have, as part of your package tonight, is a amendment to the, to the existing regional agreement. And really, the only difference is the fact that we're taking, we're taking out the language that refers to the Fifty West Street location, which was located in Mansfield because it's obviously no longer gonna be located in that location. So, Rob, do you want to just, you know, just elaborate a little further on why? That's important.
Sure. As we adopted the new site for citing CEMREC, just reviewing the IMA, making sure we're complete compliance with that, we, I recommended amendment to the board of directors of the district who adopted it. And the IMA calls for further adoption by the majority of the member communities to make an IMA amendment fact. So, this, this amendment proposes the removal of all references to specific locations for the PSEP location, basically striking Fifty West Street and the town of Mansfield from the specific reference to the PSEP location throughout the document.
Will there be a new clean document that lists the Foxborough location?
I think that the goal of the amendment was just to remove it, just to give us some agility to move if we had any contingency operations or as we flex between the transient site and the permanent site. We could propose an additional amendment at a later date to solidify the new location.
Well, I guess my question is, it was originally in there that it was the Mansfield location, so does it need to, once we finalize everything, be written up and signed that it's a Foxborough location?
I don't think it's a requirement if that's desires of the board of directors. I think that we could certainly do that.
We can, I wouldn't recommend you do that until the new facility's open.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's probably about a year away.
Correct.
A little over a year away. Just so the board's application too, the other four committees did have a majority there, or the three committees, and they all voted in favor of this as well.
Mansfield did not vote.
They're gonna vote on it tonight. Actually, or maybe last night, was it? They meet tomorrow night.
They didn't post the meeting.
Okay.
Or something, so they couldn't take a vote. But Norton and Easton did vote.
That's right. Thank you for clarifying that.
So we're just basically amending and taking the 50 West Street location in Mansfield out of...
Right, correct.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions?
Move to approve the amendment to regional dispatch IMA agreement. Second.
Motion made. Seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All's in favor? Thanks, Rob.
Thank you. Thanks, Rob.
All right. Right on time. 7:30, FY20 budget discussion update with advisory committee. Hi, Sue. How are you?
Hi.
How are you?
Good. How you doing?
Just let everybody at home know who you are.
No, I'll give a little introduction. So, my name is Sue Drang. I'm the chairman of the advisory committee. We are a committee of, currently we have 10 members. We're all volunteers. Our job is to examine the warrant articles, present them at town meeting, and give recommendations on all the warrant articles. The most important warrant article is operating budget. In fact, the state mandates that towns have finance committees or advisory committees that look at the budget because governments just naturally like to expand and the state wants to make sure there's pressure to keep them from expanding. Because basically, the state doesn't wanna have to come and bail out anybody who's in financial trouble. So our process is to, first we divide into smaller groups and they meet with each department head to discuss their budget. Then the department head comes in and meets with our whole group. So each department budget gets reviewed twice. So Mark was at our last meeting and asked if I came and just kind of explained what our recommendation is this year on the budget. So there's kind of three main concerns that the advisory committee has regarding the budget. And the first is the rainy day fund, the stabilization fund. This year, we're putting $100,000 into the stabilization fund. We have a budget of 79 million. So I always like to think, you know, town budget's the same as your budget at home. So that would be equivalent if you had a $79,000 salary, putting $100 in the bank. So we were just hoping that more money would go in the bank, the advisory committee. So as you know, the health insurance came in cheaper than was thought. So a recommendation was made to spend $139,000 on capital outlay. The advisory committee's recommendation is to hopefully put that into our rainy day fund. So that was part of our recommendation. Currently, I believe we have $4 million in the rainy day fund. And if you look, that's how much our budget increased this year from last year. So it would just be nice if we had more money in the rainy day fund. Another concern we have is the pension and healthcare, which of course is a problem for all towns. Of course, in a perfect world, what's supposed to happen is the town puts money in, the employee puts money in to a pot that's supposed to invest and grow, and then when the employee retires, that pot is supposed to pay for that employee. Unfortunately, they overestimate how big this pot's gonna grow and they hope that once you retire, that you die pretty quickly so that they don't have to pay you for too long. And luckily, that doesn't happen. So we are quite behind. So actually, the 4.8 million that we are spending this year in pension isn't going into this pot. It all goes to pay for retirees. And in fact, that amount of money is not enough to pay for the retirees. They have to take money out of the pot as well to cover the retirees. So I like to think of it as, it's like a maxed out credit card, right? You kind of have a maxed out credit card and you're paying the minimum balance. So it's getting bigger and bigger. Well, every time we add more positions and hire more people, we're kind of taking out another credit card. So the advisory committee is hoping that we lessen how many additional positions we keep adding. So this year, there's a proposed six new positions, so that's six new credit cards. The advisory committee recommends not adding the new position in finance, not adding the new position in water, and to level out the, fire wanted a new position to level that out. Chief Kelleher made an excellent presentation on why he needed a new EMS supervisor. So we thought if they took out the, one of the deputy chiefs, there's two deputy chiefs, that's a vacant position right now, that would be our goal. So if you look at the pension, it grows by 10% per year. And as I said, that's not even covering our current retirees. So the problem with it is it becomes more and more a percentage of the budget. So if you look over the past five years, it's gone from 15% of the budget to 17% of the budget. So it's gotta take from something else. And if you look at the budget, education has gone from 47% of the budget to 45%. So as this pension problem increases, it's taking away currently from education. So we just feel like we have to address that. And if you look at like towns like Sharon, over the past four years, we've increased our employees. We've got 23 more employees. But Sharon's actually reduced the amount of employees they have. So you can start to deal with this if you try to lessen how many additional positions you have. And then our final concern was the increase in salaries, 4% year over year. We're just worried that that's not sustainable. You've got proposition two and a half, so if taxes are going up by two and a half percent and you've got raises going up by 4%, you're gonna have a problem eventually. If you look at the tax levy, that's about 50 million. But the employee compensation is at like 61 million. So we already have 11 million that we have to get in state aid, local receipts, which is no problem right now. But the second you have an economic downturn, all that stuff depends on the economy, permitting fees. So this is just why we're particularly worried about that. Do you have any particular questions or...
So, a couple of weeks ago at your meeting, when you guys decided all this, these are just all of your recommendations?
Right.
Did you reach out to any of the affected people in these departments, police chief, fire chief, and discuss them before you guys made those decisions? Or was it just through the presentation period?
It's through the presentation period. I mean, when we actually vote on this stuff, I mean, I think it's probably similar to you. We don't know who's gonna make what motion or what's gonna pass, so it's kind of impossible to predict. Last week, someone made a motion to cut the CIP budget and it didn't pass. It's hard to know what people will, you know, make a motion to cut and...
Anybody on the board have any questions?
Are meeting minutes available for the discussion with the department heads? Because, you know, some of us aren't able to attend some of the AdCom meetings. You know, we look at the agenda.
Yes.
Sometimes we try to get there, sometimes we can't. Cause we, you know, we have the same concerns that AdCom does.
Sure.
Particularly salaries. That's why when we did our, when we look at our wage grids, we're trying to bring those down. One of the challenges is that a lot of our employees are represented, so you have to go through collective bargaining.
Sure.
So that adds another portion of this. There's a select few that aren't part of any bargaining unit right now. So to try and not keep them out of a bargaining unit, kind of keep the peace, we'd like to stay consistent with what the bargaining units have negotiated with our employees. And that's where the 2% coal and the 2% increase comes from. It's not just blanket given to them. There is a review process. They have to have a favorable review to be eligible. I think we've done a good job minimizing the steps over the last four or five years to bring our salaries down over time to the 50, 60% rate, range in the median. So again, we have the same concerns as AdCom does. We're concerned about revenue, where it's coming from. We're very concerned about the charter school assessment that keeps climbing year after year, which affects our state aid, our chapter 70 funding. So yeah, we'd like to put money away in stabilization funds as well. I mean, we only budget $1.4 million in the payment in lieu of taxes. We know there's gonna be excess funds coming in because we have to replenish our free cash as part of a state requirement. We have to meet that minimum. And then there'll be hopefully excess funds that we can put into stabilization. I mean, I would even be willing to say we should probably look at amending a bylaw or making a law that anything above a certain level on local receipts, a certain percentage that goes automatically into stabilization, into a stabilization fund. So then there's no question.
Yeah.
We keep, we keep putting money away. I mean, that's what we did over the last three years. And that's how we ended up with $4 million in the stabilization fund to put towards the borough school. So that saved the taxpayers $1.5 million just by doing that. So there is credence to what you're saying about putting money into stabilization. The question and concern I have is really the process. You know, was there an open debate with the department heads before the vote was taken? I'd like to see. I may agree with you. I may not. I don't know. I wasn't there for the debate and the discussions. So I think it's, I think it's easy to look at just salaries and the impact of salaries versus what the, what the impact of taking those positions away on the services. Very early on, we went in and we discussed, you know, we're gonna be level funding or level services. We decided level services. So I know in Mike's presentation on the fire side with the EMS coordinator, 90% of that's paid for. The other thing we have to look at is, are we in violation of the SAFER grant by eliminating a position? So there's other things that come into this that I think a discussion should be had before, you know, we really move forward on anything. So those are my kind of long-winded comments, but...
So I just wanna make it clear, we're an advisory board. We understand you're the elected board, so you make the policy, you set the tax rate. So your opinion is obviously, has a lot more weight than ours does because we, all we do is say, this is what we recommend. But as I said, you know, you, which is exactly how it should be. You're the elected board.
We welcome the recommendations.
Yeah.
I think the people that come to town meeting look for the AdCom recommendations. We wanna make sure that the recommendations are truly vetted. And there was an open discussion and, you know, because a lot of people don't get to see the discussion taking place at the meetings. So, you know, to be able to look at those meeting minutes and look at the discussion, you know, it'll go a long way in, not only from us, but from people at town meeting, validating those recommendations.
Sure, yeah. No, I'm very excited about this because, you know, we should have different differences of opinion. So we should be able to bring differences of opinion to town meeting. So then the taxpayer can see, okay, well, here's an idea and here's an idea. I mean, we're spending $79 million of their money, so I think it's great to have this conversation. And it should happen at town meeting where, you know, the taxpayer can then make a decision, how do I want my money spent? So I'm very happy that this is going on this year. A lot of times, the advisory committee feels a lot of pressure to just sort of have the same recommendation as the town manager. I mean, there's a lot of pressure on us to do that. So I think it's very important for the taxpayer just to see that there are different sides and different possibilities. And, but in the end of the day, this is just our recommendation. The taxpayers will decide what they think is best for the town, which is great, is the way it should be.
But I think in that same argument, the taxpayer also has to understand what the impact on services will be.
Oh, exactly. So I fully expect people to come up and make that discussion. Absolutely. I completely agree.
And as a sort of review on the budget, when the town people are voting, there are three columns, correct? There's the town manager recommendation.
Exactly.
There's a selectmen recommendation, and then there's an advisory committee recommendation. So, you know, the townspeople can see all three, right, in each line item?
Exactly. Yep, which I think is great.
Yeah, so I went to the last meeting, but I wasn't at the meeting where this particular item was talked about. Was the discussion with the, well, obviously with the full board, was it unanimous? Was it half-half majority?
Some of the votes were unanimous. Some things didn't pass. I mean, there was a, some things were unanimous. The putting that money into stabilization, that was unanimous.
That was my question. So the, you know, so many warrant articles, but the one focusing on this, was it unanimous advisory committee recommendation?
So we had a vote on different line items. So it was various votes, and I don't actually have the exact votes with me, but some of them were unanimous.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, I guess my thing, the question I asked about, you know, did you consult with, you know, the various department heads? Like what, you know, if the town takes your recommendations and adopts them, so what is the impact on the water department, finance department, the fire department? I mean, I don't know, by not seeing the meeting minutes or even when you guys were entertaining, making those cuts, if you consulted with them to find out what, what the impact would be to them? That's my biggest concern. I mean...
Well, our meetings with the department heads started like in the middle of January. Those minutes are online. When each department came in to speak with us, those minutes are all online.
No, but what I'm saying is, two meetings ago, when you guys had this discussion at that point, I would have thought that you would have them in and say, hey, this is what we're looking to recommend. What's the impact? Or did you, from your earlier meetings with them, did you know what the impact would be if you, if this position was eliminated or that position was eliminated?
I guess I'm gonna answer your question with a question. You voted on the budget a couple of weeks ago, right? So say Leah had made a motion to reduce, I don't know, finance, and David had seconded it, and then you voted to reduce the finance. So at what stage would you have had finance come in to discuss that?
Well, we would have had them in if, we probably would have found out what the ramifications are and possibly put off the vote if we didn't have the right people in the room to discuss what, what kind of an impact it would be have if we cut $500,000. Like, what would be the impact?
So, can I just weigh in? About a month ago, we had an agenda item to discuss the 2020 budget. And we were gonna discuss it at this table, and there was very little debate. And at that point, we decided that we were gonna go forward and pass the budget along. Now, had there been a debate on specific line items, we would have brought the, we went to pass the budget along to move it through the system, we would have brought those department heads and had a conversation. But because there was no, there was no debate at the table here, we decided to move the budget along. So that answers, that answers your question.
Right, okay.
So if at that meeting, before we moved the budget along, if there was a debate about specific line items, we would have circled back. We went to pass it along. We would have scheduled another session and had the, whatever department heads in here for the discussion to see what the impact was if we, if we decided to cut any positions or move any money around.
Okay.
So we would have had that discussion.
Hi, Chief and Chief.
Hello. Forgive me for dragging my brother chief up here, but I just wanted to offer the department head's point of view on this discussion. I think the process was a little different this year from my perspective. We had our department head meeting, which was, you know, typically professional and good exchange of ideas and so on. But for example, in my budget, there will be operational impact on the reduction in overtime and the elimination of the fourth cruiser. And in both cases, we gave very detailed, concise information to our liaison and to the AdCom committee. And there was a conceptual discussion had between my liaison and I about the overtime issue, for example, but it was nebulous and abstract at best. He had talked about a theory upon which overtime would relate as a ratio to the amount of regular compensation an employee earns. And then the next thing I know, there's a vote from AdCom and a recommendation dramatically different than what we had discussed. So I guess to David's point, I was sort of left confused about the process. My preference as a department head, obviously, would have been to have the AdCom take a position that the police overtime needed to be reduced in spite of the fact that it's been historically underfunded. And we have a new concept coming in July that we haven't dealt with before, and have a conversation. dealt with before, and have a conversation about it so that we could try and articulate the impact and see if that would still be their recommendation. But it feels like the recommendation happened in a vacuum and I think, not speaking for the other department heads, but I, my sense is that, you know, two or three of the major department heads were all left feeling that way and didn't quite understand why the process sort of veered into a different process. So, I have great respect for AdCom's role, great respect for the time and effort they put in. I fully support their right and obligation to come and make a recommendation, which may differ from the town manager and the selectmen, no problem with any of that. I just wish the process felt more transparent and collaborative to get them to the point where they made their recommendation. And now that we will go to town meeting with the three columns, with the town manager and the selectmen taking one position and AdCom taking the third, I will, speaking for myself and my own department, you know, implore the town manager and the selectmen to get up on town meeting floor and defend the position you took and try and help us avoid the operational impact that the AdCom recommendations will have on our budget.
So, that's exactly what I expect to happen. That's what I want to have happen. I want you to come and say, "This is why we want this," and then let the taxpayers decide. I think we do a disservice to the taxpayer when we just present them with one recommendation. I think it's important for the advisory committee to, and with all due respect, what you were just saying, I think, kind of illustrates a little bit of the pressure that's put on us to just sort of rubber stamp what's there. You know, if we have a difference of opinion, suddenly it's like, "Well, wait a minute, why did you have a difference of opinion?" And there's a bit of pressure that says, "Well, you really shouldn't be doing that."
Yeah, so I, I just want to reinforce that that's not what I said. I support the right to make the recommendation. I just, it just didn't get shared with me, it didn't get discussed with me. Your question, Chris, was the question that needed to be asked and the answer to that question is no. That communication and discussion between AdCom and the department heads at that last stage did not occur. And if I may, just speak to Sue's point, which she's made a couple of times tonight, the pressure that they feel to fall in lockstep with the town manager and the selectmen, the converse side of that argument is, you shouldn't feel compelled to go against those recommendations just to, you know, justify the role. If, if we convince you that that need is real, then what I have encouraged Board of Selectmen to do and Department Heads to do and AdCom members to do and having been all three of those things, is to make difficult choices. And if it's going to require support for public safety at the expense of some other service that the town provides, then we should prioritize the services and make those difficult choices.
Yeah, the challenge that I, I face now is trying to, I mean, my proposal with the Health Department is fairly complicated and, and I need to now try to educate people on where we're going there while trying to maintain a position that, that I need is critical to my operation. You know, we have seventeen open construction projects at Patriot Place alone. So, for me to take on the Health Department's, public health nurse role and maintain our presence at those construction projects and everything else going on in town, all the home sales that we have to do, all the inspections that we're responsible for, that's a, that's a challenge and to try to squeeze that into a five-minute presentation on town meeting floors is challenging when we had six months to try to get there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Chairman, I just, I think there are a number of folks that want to speak to this issue. I think it, it falls back on the process issue that you both raised tonight. And, and I, I'm going to take issue with Sue's issue about pressure because asking a question is not pressure. And then that was what we did the other night, was we asked, "What happened and how did we find out about it?" And the, the challenge was, is that I asked before that meeting, "Do you need us there? Do you need me there?" And the answer was, "No, you're not needed." That's troubling to me because that's concerning to me in the sense that, that the, that the, the way that we're trying to look through things and try to, to transparency of, of this process, supposed to be clear to everyone, particularly to us, who try to work in this thing, this process every day. And so, we don't have to agree, I absolutely agree with Sue's point on that. We don't have to agree. We just want to know why we disagree. And, and so far, I haven't heard anybody say why we disagree. I, I haven't seen any factual evidence why we disagree. I haven't seen any information that's, that's been given to me and the fact that what I just heard a few minutes ago simply isn't right. It's not correct. So, I, I really, I'm troubled by that because if that's the case...
Well, I, hold on, what is...
Well, let me finish, let me finish my point because I, I respected your points. That, I think the, the issue is, is that we just want to know why this came to, to where it was because, quite honestly, I was of the opinion, I didn't know there were problem troubles with, with, with the, with the budget. I didn't know there were any concerns with the budget until the next day after Mike went to the meeting and said, "By the way, do you know they just cut out almost a half a million dollars out of the budget?" And the answer was, "No, I didn't know that." I would think I would know that if I was the architect of the budget process. That's the problem I'm having here. If people disagree with where the budget's put together, I'm open to that discussion all day long. We can certainly have that discussion and if, if there's disagreement, in fact, I will, I'll even, I'll even say to you, there's actually cuts that were proposed that I can support because I think, I think there were reasons for getting to that point, but some of the ones just don't make any sense to me at all and, and I, and most of them don't make sense to me at all. So, that's just my, that's my, that's my piece.
So, from, from a former advisory person and former advisory chair and now current selectman, the process is, the advisory committee you're appointed and you represent the taxpayer, all right? You, you, you're a board, and I, when I was on the board, there were people that I thought were very intelligent and they had a great grasp of it and there were people that were, probably never saw our budget book and had a great, good grasp of it because they paid the taxes. If we're getting upset because of the process, we've got a chairman here that is, is, is an appointed autonomous, completely separate from us, and you had a board that's completely separate from us. It could be, and I'm going back two years, and the, the process, my mindset was, the taxes continue to raise, we're on level service or level spending. We do level service and we've had this discussion before, we are not level service. We're hiring new people, the budget's continuing to rise, we're getting four-plus percent raises. I think what I'm hearing, starting five or six years ago, is when is it going to stop? And I'm actually happy that the advisory committee took this step. You know, it, it's the same number that we talked about two years ago, one and a quarter percent. I was surprised that you guys acted at that meeting because I, I didn't see it coming. But, and it said a couple of times, there's going to be three columns. There's a town manager column, which was brought to us that he recommends, there's our column, which happens to be the same, and most of the years it is the same, and there's the advisory committee. And if the department want to come back and defend during town meeting, it's probably going to be a long meeting because there's sixteen thousand people that are represented by you that could be on the other side. Couple of years ago, I had a grassroots group that we had a warrant article and I brought it in front of the advisory committee. And you voted it down and I went to town meeting and I presented it and I got approval. So, it's, it's just because the advisory committee says one thing or the selectmen say one thing. The beauty of this is it's town meeting that you can, you know, we had the Child Sexual Abuse Awareness Committee. We had three or four meetings with you. I don't think you were chair at the time, but there was disagreements, there was a lot of battle back and forth. But I went to every single one of those meetings because I knew what was going to be on there. Our finance department, our department heads, our town manager, assistant town manager knows that the meetings are there. Granted, it was a little different this year because I think you probably did do a little bit of a curveball because the information was presented to you, you did a full debate, you decided that's what you wanted to do and people weren't there. It's a little different then, so I can see their point that they didn't have that second and third level. But you have the, the liaisons that work with the department heads, you bring back the information and the beauty of it is, you're autonomous, you represent the people and you come up with a decision. More people need to go to your meetings, you know, the debate of, of it being televised or not and meeting minutes and stuff, but get out of your chairs and go to the meeting and defend your warrant articles. You know, the, I, I've got one on the billboard this year, the Orpheum sign. I made sure I went to the meetings even though if it wasn't on there because I knew it was going to be discussed and if it got voted against when I wasn't there, shame on me. So, I don't, I don't, I don't have any problem with you having a different number than us. I think the town meeting is probably going to be a little longer now, but that's the beauty, that's the way the town government is set up. It's not a city, it's not a mayor, you know, it's not a rubber stamp, let, let's decide how to do it. And if, you know, so the years that I've been on here, I've seen other towns, you go, you get the economy that goes up and drops. I've seen layoffs, I've seen budget cuts. I don't see it in Foxborough. Maybe it's time for that. Maybe it's time for a healthy debate. We don't have it at this table too often. We certainly don't have it with the school committee. There's very little discussion. We have more discussion on a speed limit on a road than we do on a budget sometimes. The town management do a great job going, you know, and I know when you started your budget process, it was up here, it got cut down here, but I actually look forward to being cut a little bit more. I think we do have the opportunity to do it. It's new hires, it's, it's, it's salaries, it's raises, it's cost of living, it's seniors not getting any cost of living increases for year after year. I think it's coming to a head and I look forward to this discussion, you know, see where it goes. But I don't think anyone should be offended that people weren't warned of this. This is part of the, this is our town charter, this is the way it's supposed to go.
I, I don't, I don't think anybody's offended. I, I think...
I was at the last meeting and there was a lot of discussion on that.
Nope. I'm not saying anybody at this table is offended. I'm just saying, you know, I just want to understand where, where the thought process was, that's all. Like I said, I, I may agree with it, you know, once I, once I go back and I read the minutes and understand the discussion and the impact on, on the services. I, you know, that, the debate we had, you know, two years ago was, was on, on taxes and revenue, not on expenses. So, we, we, we pushed revenue into stabilization. That was part of the four million dollars that we just put into the borough school. So, those are good debates to have, okay? But I don't think not having layoffs and not having two and a half overrides is a bad thing. I mean, that, that's good, that's showing the health of the economy as long as we can keep putting money away. So, if the economy does downturn and we have to go to that, into that, you know, that avenue, you know, hopefully we don't. We didn't have to do it in, in, I don't think we did in two thousand and eight, two thousand, two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight because we had that, that stabilization fund, we, we had the free cash to support that. Because everybody knows that as soon as you start laying people off and it starts to affect services, people are going to complain about that too. So, we try and maintain, our revenue was up four percent, our expenses went up three point nine percent and a lot of that was, you know, health insurance.
Fixed costs or...
You know, fixed, fixed costs. I mean, we, we did a little bit better than, than what we thought and, and pensions continue to, to climb. Fortunately, we're, fortunately, we're paying, we're paying down the OPEB through the meal stacks. I mean, there's, there's things that we can do and we, as long as we continue to forecast...
I think a big piece of that too is that we're paying for the debt on the, on the new, new projects.
Right.
You know, so that, that's a big piece of that, that hasn't been discussed. And I, I think that what's concerning to me is I, I went back and I took a look at the revenue forecast that we first came out with in, I think it was October, when Randy made the presentation to the entire, to the board, the, the AdCom and to this board and to the, and to the school committee. And I looked at it again today to see how well we stayed within that comparison. And not only did we stay within the comparison, but the revenue's actually a little better than we were back then. So, there's, there's no, there's no impetus that I see for any cuts right now. There's no, there's no, there's no major concerns that I can see on the, on the horizon here that we should be taking steps to cut the budget or recommend to cut the budget for that matter. I think what's concerning to me is I go, I went back another step and I looked at the financial summit documentation that we had two years ago. And I looked at that final document, I actually gave it to the board, for you to look at tonight to re, to review it again, and looked at the summary and I said, "What's changed?" And the answer is, "Nothing's changed." We're still on the same track, the same plan that we said we were going to do two years ago. And in fact, it's actually a little better because we're actually meeting those goals and criteria that we said we, we set out to do. So, I, I'm just alarmed by that, but, because we didn't have that conversation. I would love to have the conversation, if you, philosophically, about where you want to go, find, that's a, that's a good way to do it. But I think to precipitously cut it, cut the budget without having a conversation with the departments of the effects and to, and to, and with, and with everybody having the input into that, knowing what that imp, how that impact works is problem, is a problem process. That's my big concern.
So, I just want to say a few things. First of all, I've been talking about pensions for three years. Sean McCarthy's been talking about stable, putting more money into stabilization for three years. This shouldn't be a total shock. Stephanie talks about salaries at every single one of our meetings. So, this hasn't come out of left field, I don't think. And we just feel like we could do better. You know, we do have money in the rainy day fund, about five percent of our budget, but Milford has twenty-three percent of their budget, Plainville has twen, twelve percent of their budget, so we could do better. That's all we're saying. We're, and like I said, this is just a recommendation from ten taxpayers on how we think we could improve things.
So, just one reaction to that was that we actually did exactly what you just said. We put four million dollars away in stabilization to help pay for a project that we didn't have to go to a two and a half override for the community to, to pay for. I don't know of any other, I don't think Plainville or Milford did that. So, I, you can compare all you want, but the process that we've used has actually been to the benefit of the community and to the residents by doing it the way we do.
That's great. So, we can have this debate at town meeting so taxpayers can decide, you know, do they wish more money gets put in a rainy day fund or would they like to see more spending? I mean, that, I think this is great and I think it's going to be great that it's all going to be discussed at town meeting. I have to admit, I'm a little bit worried that next year, the advisory committee's just going to rubber stamp the budget again because they're going to feel like, "All right, we, if we don't do that, we're going to get this backlash." So, I hope that doesn't happen because I think our job is to present a different set of opinions for the taxpayers so they can see that there are different, I mean, when we disagree rather than just, "Okay, we'll agree with you."
I, I hope, I hope they never do that either, Sue. I hope this, the committee stands firm in, in evaluating things for what they are.
Yeah.
The challenge I face now is that all the department heads that met with the AdCom throughout the entire process of six months are now turning and looking and saying, "Why do we do this for?" Because nobody told us why our budgets were cut. That's the problem. They, nobody told us why. We're still waiting for, for an explanation.
The, so I just explained, the capital outlay, we want to see that in stabilization instead of spending that. We don't want more in the positions. We're not firing anybody, we're not laying anybody off, we're just saying, "Let's not have all these new positions because the pension is now starting to get so big that is affecting the education budget." And we're concerned with a four percent raises because at some point, if your taxes are going up two and a half, then the four percent raises, it, the math just doesn't work there. So, those are our concerns. That's why we made the cuts that we made.
But we are, we are, the two and a half percent is just, is just the property tax.
But all the rest of it...
Our, our total revenues come in over four percent each year and we, and they would be, and that's been proven to be true for the past five years.
But it's all relying on the economy, those other things.
We have things in this committee that most communities don't have.
License and fees, state, what's that?
We have things in this committee that generate revenue that most, most communities don't have.
Oh, exactly, exactly.
So, that's, that's the reason why it comes in as well as it does. So, I think...
No, so nobody's saying, everybody's doing a terrible job. We're not saying that at all. We're just saying, here are some ideas that we have, that's all we're saying. We're not criticizing what anybody does, we're not, and like I said before, we know our place is just to recommend, we are not policymakers, we're not, we don't decide the tax rate. That's, none of that is us. All we do is come up with a recommendation and this is our recommendation.
Okay. Anybody else on the board have anything? All right, be an interesting town meeting. Thanks.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if, if there were other department heads that were here, I don't know if they want to just address any of the questions you may have.
Well, they're going to have the opportunity at town meeting.
Fair enough.
All right, next on the agenda, sign the annual town meeting warrant. So, everything on this bill is good?
Yeah, you know, we've, I think we've, we've viewed it to death, right? Pretty much.
Yes, we have.
So, that is good. It's reviewed with town council, it's been reviewed with, with internally, we've reviewed all the language. It's been reviewed with, with internally, and we've reviewed all the language. I mean, if there's a mistake, it's not because we haven't looked at it twelve times.
Okay. Anybody on the board have any questions on it?
Do we make a motion or just sign it?
Do we just, are signing this or do we need to...
You need, you need to approve. You have to sign, have to sign it.
I don't think we ever approved it.
Yeah.
I don't think we ever approved the warrant article.
I think we just signed it.
You just signed it?
Sign it, yeah.
Okay. No, no, I think, no, I think in the past, no, let me start again. I don't think we make an, we made a motion. We made a motion to close it.
So, we do need to make a motion to approve?
Yeah, we have not in the...
Okay.
We need to. I'm sorry.
Take a drink of water, Jim.
We need to approve this.
So, let's make a motion to approve it.
Move to approve the warrant.
Second. Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor? All right. All right, so we'll sign that at the end. Foxborough Housing Authority, request for waiver of building permit fees. What's that about, Bill?
So, this is, they, they're trying to get their, line up their project for the, um, I think it was the, is it, this is one of their, their newer projects that they're working on, they're developing, looking to develop. Because I think it's just, I don't think it's a very big one. It's a, it's a relatively small development. I just, I haven't spent a lot of time on this, to be honest with you.
Bottom line is, just waives five hundred and twenty dollars worth of fees.
Right. This was, um, yeah, sixty-five and sixty-two, sixty-seven Walnut Street. It's a group home.
Have we ever done this before for them?
I don't have any, I don't have any history on this because nothing's happened since I've been here. So, I don't, I don't know if we ever have done, is that the only person I can look to in this one is Jim because you have the only history on this.
I know when we looked at waiving fees, do we have the authority to do it? And it comes into a big... I'm, I'm apprehensive. Again, it's only five hundred and sixty dollars, but on the scheme of things...
Yeah.
Uh, it's not a big amount.
Right.
But the precedence in the "why them and not us" and is it a public body? Is it a pseudo-public?
How have we dealt with, with the, with the town projects? I don't, I don't think we've waived it for the town projects.
We didn't.
I think we did.
Town, I thought town projects don't pay ourselves because of town...
Well, we still have to pay for the inspections.
Yeah.
The individuals, inspection, for the individual inspectors. And we didn't waive those.
So, I'm just apprehensive. Nothing personal about the project of the group, but...
No.
When you waive a, a fee, it just opens up...
I mean, I can, I can tell you, a lot of towns don't waive them.
Yeah. So, so, when they inspected town hall a year ago, they came in and...
The inspectors, they, we still have to pay the inspectors, so we, we pay it. It's accounting of the, of the whole project cost is when you do that.
Yeah, I'm, especially not knowing if we've ever done this before, I'm not a fan of it. I don't know how the rest of the board is. Nobody...
Don't forget, they're right around the corner is going to be the bigger project. That's going to be off of one forty.
That's what I'm thinking. You say it once, and then how do you say no? And if that's, um, if that's state money and state grant money coming in and we say no now, they can say no then.
Right.
It just, it just doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
Yeah.
Permits are part of the, part of the project.
Yeah.
Yeah, all the soft costs and permit fees are built into it.
Yep. Yeah, and setting a precedent, you're right. That's, that's huge.
So, I don't think any, but, anybody on the board is in favor of this.
Maybe if you, we just vote no action and if they, they're strong about it and there's a reason that we're not seeing, they can come back at another meeting.
Right. Yeah.
So, move no action. Second.
All right. Motion made, seconded for no action. All is in favor? All right. All right, for selectmen's update, just want to thank the J.C.'s for the Easter egg hunt for the weekend. Heard it was very well attended. Got nothing else? Anybody else have anything?
I got to see the, um, the Rotary all filled with Easter eggs before the swarm of kids came. Really kind of cool.
Yeah, they...
I heard they were missing five, Doc.
I heard there was like, they filled like four thousand eggs, so, God bless them. Good job, J.C.'s. All right, town managers' update. Just a, a few things. Mike's on vacation this week, so that's why he's missing. I'm on the missing this week, as is Amanda, by the way. Amanda is, I think, enjoying her, probably her first pub beer in, in Ireland right now. So, good for her. Good for her. Um, the, um, we're starting the recruitment process with my guest for the, for the finance director process, and so that's going to be, um, we're going to have some conversation. I certainly want to have some input from the board on that, too. But we, we want to try and put together a, an advertisement, which we'll be working on this week and getting, getting that out. We are trying to put together a panel that will, um, that will include a member of the board as well as some subject matter experts, and myself and Mike, and we'll be part of that process as well. Some good news to report is that, um, the six-string license was approved, the one that was just before the board recently, and the Orpheum license came back today as well. So, we'll be moving forward on those, on both of those. Construction on the long-awaited roundabout is expected to start around the first of May. We think. It's, it's up to the contractor at this point. Everything else is done. We're good to go. Roger has indicated to me it's, we think it's going to start then, Rog, for the roundabout? We're talking about the roundabout? We think, if the contractor works with us?
We have a pre-construction conference scheduled for next week, and following the pre-construction conference, I assume the contractor is doing all right to work. He's all geared up for it.
And how long do you think the construction will last in this?
Uh, we're hoping to do it in about six to eight weeks.
Okay, great. Oh, excellent. Quick, quick.
Roger, I just want to say thank you. I know you've been following this and, actually, not following is not the right word.